This is the Thursday, July 18th, 2024 Regular Village Board Meeting. Let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Here.
Trustee Listener?
Here.
Trustee Meelopolis?
Here.
Trustee Underdunk?
Here.
Trustee Ruben?
Here.
Trustee Scott?
Here.
President Rowan?
Here. Okay, the first item on the agenda is consideration of minutes. We have the Board of Trustees and Committee of the Whole Minutes for June 20, 2024, and the Board of Trustees Regular Meeting on June 20, 2024. The minutes were circulated, they were published online. So unless anyone has any comments or corrections on the minutes, is there a motion to approve them?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, the motion, the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is where we allow members of the public, I don't see any, to address the Village Board on a topic that's within our purview and jurisdiction but is not listed in another location on the agenda. If you'd like to speak about a matter that is listed on the agenda, we ask that you wait until that agenda item is called and we'll give you an opportunity to speak then. If your matter is on the consent agenda, let us know if you'd like to remove that matter and from the consent agenda put it on the regular agenda so you can talk about it. Anyone desiring to speak should fill out a written speaker form which is located in the back of the boardroom and submit it to the Village Manager. Public comment time is intended as an opportunity for you to make comments to the Village Board. We will listen to everything you have to say, but this will not ordinarily be the time for a discussion or engagement by us. If appropriate, we may direct the Village Manager or other Village staff to respond to questions or issues raised at a later date. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. To be fair to all, we will strictly enforce this rule. We request that all speakers be respectful, civil, and non-repetitive, and we ask that all members of the audience refrain from applauding or making any other comments during or after any speaker. So with those rules in mind, is there any public comment? Not hearing any, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is reports of committees. The first report is the Committee of the Whole. We just had that about half an hour ago, and we talked about two issues. One was a report from our Public Safety Director about engaging a Village Prosecutor to expand the role because we've been finding that the state's attorneys assigned by the county are not able to keep up with the job. And the second issue we discussed was a presentation by the Village Engineer about the North Branch watershed and how we would be working with Lake County and others to try to make sure that we are operating appropriately with the storm water that we have in this area. So that was the Committee of the Whole that we had. The next report is the Finance Committee, and I'll ask Trustee Ruben to report on that.
Thank you. At Tuesday evening's Finance Committee meeting, the committee discussed the monthly financial reports for the month of June. As of the end of June, the general fund revenue performance for a number of the Village's revenue sources exceeded both the monthly budget targets and prior year's receipts, including income tax, building permits, ambulance fees, parking fees, vehicle and garbage service fees. We discussed the fact that sales taxes, however, continued to trend down due to several things that happened last year that make it a little skewed in terms of trying to match that. There were a number of one-time purchases, and also this year was a slight decline in new auto sales. Water fund revenues are on target for this time of year, and expenditures in that fund are expected to pick up in the next quarter with our water main project planned for later this year. Expenditures in all the other funds are within budgetary targets on expenditures, and the staff reported to us that we're seeing an increase in personnel and benefit expenditures, but that's pretty much as planned as we continue to fill vacant positions. So the good news is we're hiring the people we want to hire, but that, of course, does increase our expenses. Lastly, the committee also discussed the change order to the water belt capital project that's on tonight's agenda, and changes the timelines for several other projects, including renovations to municipal buildings and engineering for upcoming public work projects. That's what we spent our time talking about.
Thanks for that report. The next report is the Plan Commission, and our representative on the Plan Commission is Trustee Listener.
Thank you very much. Um...
The next report is the Council for Inclusion and Community, and Trustee Scott is going to report on that.
Thank you. The GCIC met on Monday, July 1st at 5:30 PM, and the council held a follow-up conversation regarding comments and contributions to the Comprehensive Plan, which included discussion of community events which take place throughout town. The council talked about ideas for further engagement, including collaborating with Honey Butter Fried Chicken in some form of Glencoe-based trivia night to be included in the restaurant's rotation. Following the Comprehensive Plan discussion, each subcommittee shared the work that they completed over the last month, and two members of the Communications Subcommittee met with staff later that week to discuss a social media and proclamation policy for future consideration by this board. The next council meeting will be on Monday, August 5th.
Thanks for that report. The next report is the Preservation Commission, and this is the first of Trustee Underdunk's two reports.
Thank you very much. The Preservation Commission met on Tuesday, July 9th. The Commission held a formal meeting with staff from Robbins Architecture and the owners of ADI Estate Drive, a certified historical landmark. The property is unique in that all four sides of the building are protected, typically on historical properties. Only what can be seen from the public right-of-way is protected. The proposed changes are in attempt to make the home more livable, and none of the changes proposed affect the historical architectural character of the building. Some of the changes, though, are on the interior, which makes it a really unusual application. The applicants will be returning to the Preservation Commission for a certificative appropriateness public hearing in August. The Commission also reviewed one demolition application for 16 Madison, one of the older homes in Glencoe, but no action should be taken. It's a part of an older building and not really in terrific shape. The next meeting will be August 27th at 5:30 PM.
Thanks for that report. Now there's another one. Trustee Underdunk, the Tree Commission, please.
The Tree Commission, before I do this, the Tree Commission report, I hear from staff that he came through relatively unscathed of the big storms, and we're quite lucky. The Tree Commission met on Wednesday, June 26th at Village Hall. The Commission reviewed the charge of Forestry Division's Urban Forestry Management Plan, which addresses maintenance of the village's 800, or 8,000-plus parkway trees, planting new and replacement trees on village property, and tree removal of dead or dying trees, and before providing information to the public on the care of trees. Due to the circadian invasion, the village's tree planting program was delayed to this fall. Tree damage from the invasion has been less than expected. Commissioners and staff continued their review of proposed revisions to the permitted tree planting list to increase tree diversity while discouraging unwanted species. A new adjusted tree list will be reviewed at the next commission meeting. In addition, the Commission will be addressing such issues as non-native trees, invasive trees such as buckthor, and problem trees and landmark trees. Public outreach will continue. Events such as our successful Labor Day or Arbor Day planting program, coordination with the sustainability of the Commission's library lectures, and joint efforts with the Park District and Friends of Green Bay Trail will continue. We hope to use the Village Newsletter to raise awareness of the importance of trees to the health of our community. The next commission meeting will be at 11:00 AM on August 12th at Village Hall.
Thanks for both of those reports, and that concludes the Reports of Committees. The next item on the agenda is Reports of Officers. First, the Village Manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I just have a few items I wanted to share this evening. The first relates to our new quarterly departmental reports. For several years, staff created quarterly reports outlining and summarizing work that each department was responsible for completing across the village's numerous service areas. This effort was suspended during the pandemic and while we worked to onboard new leadership in the organization. But I'm pleased to note that in tonight's agenda packet on page 19, the new report, which is right here, outlining work in the Administration and Finance Development Services, Public Works, Golf Club, and Public Safety Departments, has been shared with the community. The report's intended to be a snapshot of important factors impacting the village, noting the work that's underway on various projects and programs, and sharing important metrics. Each quarter will focus on outlining information in an easy-to-digest, attractive format. Each report, and we have two already for this year so far, even though we just released both of them pretty much at the same time, will be posted on the village's transparency portal on our website, and we'll be sharing it in eNews and on social media so that the community can review it. Joining our Office Hours video series, extensive social media presence, monthly Treasurers Report, and numerous other public information pieces developed by the Village team, the new quarterly reports are a further step in our commitment to highlight the important work that the Village does every day in service to our community and to increase the transparency of how budget resources are allocated. So I'm excited that we've re-engaged on this effort, and I'm thankful to our leadership team, and I'm especially thankful to Communications Manager Sammy Hansel, who's done such a great job of making these reports easy to read and understand. Thanks to all for assembling the document. We'll be doing this now, as I said, on a quarterly basis. The next one will be released in October, and again, we'll get on that release cycle. So if there are feedback points that anybody has, we always want to hear that. If anyone in the community is interested in how we're structuring these, or if there's information that you'd like more information about, please just always reach out to my office, and we're happy to have a discussion about that. Public Information Sessions relative to Home Rule is the second item that I wanted to share. So following numerous discussions of the Village Board over the last several years, we've been sharing information since May of this year about a possible Home Rule referendum likely to take place in November of 2024. The extensive studies that the Village conducted over the last several years have been included on the village's website, and this week, a brief video was released featuring President Rowan that notes facts and information about the subject and announcing the first of three public information sessions. The first is scheduled for this coming Monday, July 22nd, here in the council chambers and beginning at 6:00 PM until 7:00 PM. We encourage the community to attend. Future sessions are planned for mid-August and late-September. As I noted, there's extensive information on the village's website, and there will be more information shared in the coming weeks and months on our social media channels, eNews, and in some special mailers that are being developed right now. Relative to the downtown parking and streetscape discussions that we had last month at our Committee of the Whole meeting, the board and staff engaged at that time in discussions about the growing needs to address our parking, the growing need to address parking in our downtown, as well as to desire, a desire to consider how we might review our downtown streetscape in targeted areas. At that meeting last month, the board directed staff to develop an RFP to encourage firms to work with the Village to study these important subjects. I just wanted to make mention of the fact that staff is hard at work at developing that RFP. We expect to have a recommendation back to the Village Board early this fall. Once underway, we'll begin to engage our businesses, residents, and stakeholders in the study, with hopes for recommendations coming back in early 2025. So work is underway on that, and as I said, I just wanted to provide a brief update. It is a subject of some interest in the community, as I'm sure you're all aware. Last but not least, I wanted to just make mention of some upcoming events, but first, note that Independence Day celebrations in Glencoe this year were fantastic. I was talking with staff. I think there were more people at the parade than I can remember in the last 11 years that I've been participating. It was just a really wonderful set of events. Was glad to see the community come out in force. The fireworks were awesome. Great job by our staff team in all that they did, and of course, a great job by the Park District in what they facilitated for the events of this year's Independence Day. We do have more events coming up in the community through the summer. This weekend, the Glencoe Festival of Arts takes place in downtown in partnership with Amder Productions. The festival will feature our local restaurants, as always, and over 90 high-quality artisans from around the country. This will be Saturday and Sunday from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. Our streets close in the downtown Friday at 5:00. The Village Court parking lot, Hazel Avenue, Tudor Court are all available, but most of Park Avenue and all of Vernon, from Tudor to Temple, or excuse me, Tudor to Hazel, will be closed during that period of time. The streets will reopen Sunday around 9:00 PM. We've communicated all of that with our businesses in the downtown business district. They look forward to this event every year, as do we, and it looks like the weather is going to cooperate, so that's important. In addition, Saturday, July 27th, we'll join our Friends of the Friends of the Green Bay Trail for Trail Day 2024. That takes place from 8:00 AM to noon between Shelton Park and Hubbard Woods on the Green Bay Trail. There's an opportunity to visit with community groups and others and enjoy the really amazing natural habitat restoration that the Friends of the Green Bay Trail have been able to achieve over the last 14 years. It's just a great event, fun for kids, fun for families, and kids of all ages. And then I just also wanted to mention, even though it's ending, tomorrow is our last Glencoe Alfresco for 2024. This has been a new event this year that we've partnered with Writers Theater to facilitate. This will be the fourth of those events, and as I said, the last one for 2024. Takes place just outside of Writers Theater. We've had different food trucks each time we've done the event, different live music each time we've done the event. Crowds have been fluctuating throughout, so hopefully we close off the event tomorrow with a big crowd, and that folks can come out and enjoy food and live music and happy hour specials from Writers Theater, as they likewise close their current production this weekend as well, which has had a really, really great run, Hot Wing King at Writers Theater. So other than that, I have no further updates unless there are questions from anybody. Thank you.
I don't see any questions. Thanks for that report. So now the Village President's report. First, briefly, the schedule for Home Rule. At this point, it's pretty well-known. The plan is for the Home Rule referendum vote to be at our next Village Board meeting, which is August 15th, and the vote would be to put the Home Rule referendum on the ballot for the November Election Day. And I just want to say, you know, why are we doing that? We're doing it for two reasons. One is that the Village Board bullied, we wouldn't make it a referendum vote for our residents. We think it's a good idea for the village, and I will have more to say about that, and maybe other board members will too, before we vote in August. The second reason we're doing this is the timing. There are different strategies about when you put referendums on the ballot, and there are strategies about putting a referendum on a local election ballot when the turnout is low. There's a strategy there, but that's not what we want to do. We recognize, we think Home Rule is a good idea, we think it's a smart idea. We're not hiding. We want, so we choose an election where everybody's voting. That's why we're going to put this on the ballot in November. We want to make sure everybody can participate. We're not hiding. Next item on the, that I want to talk about briefly, is our continuing discussions with the Forest Preserve. As everybody knows, the Glencoe Golf Club is half on village land and half on forest preserve land. That's been true for 100 years, and the Glencoe Golf Club is a joint venture with the county. It's a county asset. Glencoe residents do not get favoritism at the Glencoe Golf Club in anything. They don't get better rates, they don't get better tee times. We are citizens of the county, we're citizens of Northern Illinois, and everybody is treated the same. The golf club is not a revenue source for the Village of Glencoe. The money that is made in golf operations is plowed back into that golf course to make it the magnificent place that it is. It is a revenue source for the county, as Trustee Hallwax pointed out. We paid just short of $97,000 because the county gets a percentage of the gross. But this has been a joint venture, an asset, not just to Glencoe, where the club is located, but to the county and the residents of the county as a whole. We get that it's in Glencoe, so it's close to us, but most of the play comes from people who aren't residents of Glencoe. The Village of Glencoe residents voted in a referendum to pay an additional $15 million in taxes, we had a bond for that, to pay for a new clubhouse, because the existing clubhouse 100 years old is falling down. The prices have increased. We think it's, that the village is going to contribute, and its residents will contribute some $18 million to build a new, an improved clubhouse. We've been talking, and I've been talking with our county board commissioner about, you know, what we were hoping for with the Village of Glencoe stepping up and putting $18 million into this joint venture, and the clubhouse is, it happens, the clubhouse is located on the county portion of the joint venture. So, and when we talked to our commissioner, and he's, you know, he's very helpful, and he's assured us he wants to help as best he can, we said one thing we were worried about was we didn't want to spend $18 million to build a great asset and to have that asset then be taken for something else because it's on county land. And the county, our county commissioner initially said, well, maybe we can get an agreement with the county that if they took the building, they'd pay us for it. And what he said is, they'll never, under those circumstances, they'll never take the building. We thought that'd be great. And he reached out to the county, and he talked to them, and they said, forget it. So then he had another idea, which we thought was a good idea, which is we would extend the lease. The lease, because we're planning to build, runs to 2049, which is about the duration of the 20-year bonds that we're, you know, committing to pay. And we talked with the county about extending the lease so that the lease would extend to the useful life of the building, which should last till the end of the century, maybe longer. The first building lasts 100 years. I am very disappointed to say that the county has said to that request, forget it. We're going to be talking to the county tomorrow morning, and I'm going to reiterate that we think that's fair. We're not, we don't ask the county for favors, we don't ask the county for largesse. We don't think we're entitled to that, and we recognize that this is a very big county, and we're, our citizens are better off than citizens of other parts of the county. But we've stepped up, and we're putting $18 million into this asset, joint asset, and we think it would be fair to extend the lease. But so far, the county has said no to that. Now there's, you know, the lease currently would expire at 2049, so there's a lot of time to talk with the county about it, but I have to say, I'm very disappointed that the county has not been interested in talking to us about what we think is not a gift or favoritism, but just something that would be fair in light of the contribution that our citizens have been willing to make. know, what we were hoping for with the Village of Glencoe stepping up and putting $18 million into this joint venture. And the clubhouse is, it happens, the clubhouse is located on the county portion of the joint venture. So, and when we talked to our Commissioner, and he's, you know, he's very helpful and he's assured us he wants to help as best he can, we said, one thing we were worried about was we didn't want to spend $18 million to build a great asset and to have that asset then be taken for something else, because it's on county land. And the county committee, our county commissioner initially said, well, maybe we can get an agreement with the county that if they took the building, they'd pay us for it. And what he said is, they'll never, under those circumstances, they'll never take the building. We thought that'd be great. And he reached out to the county and they talked to them, and they said, forget it. So then he had another idea, which we thought was a good idea, which is we would extend the lease. The lease, because we're planning to build, runs to 2049, which is about the duration of the 20-year bonds that we're, you know, committing to pay. And we talked with the county about extending the lease so that the lease would extend to the useful life of the building, which should last till the end of the century, maybe longer. The first building lasts 100 years. I am very disappointed to say that the county has said to that request, forget it. We're going to be talking to the county tomorrow morning, and I'm going to reiterate that we think that's fair. We're not, we don't ask the county for favors, we don't ask the county for largess, we don't think we're entitled to that. And we recognize that this is a very big county, and we're, our citizens are better off than citizens of other parts of the county. But we've stepped up and we're putting $18 million into this asset, joint asset, and we think it would be fair to extend the lease. But so far, the county has said no to that. Now, there's, you know, the lease currently would expire at 2049, so there's a lot of time to talk with the county about it, but I have to say, I'm very disappointed that the county has not been interested in talking to us about what we think is not a gift or favoritism, but just something that would be fair in light of the contribution that our citizens have been willing to make. What we will be talking to the county about tomorrow is that in designing the clubhouse, there have been some adjustments to the footprint of the clubhouse between the old decrepit clubhouse and the new one that we're planning to build. We've been trying to talk with the county about that for months, and they've sort of pushed it off and canceled meetings. And so now we're going to find out what the county has in mind as a result of the modest change in the footprint. I don't know what the county's going to say. I'm concerned about what the county might say. And I guess what I'll say to the board and to the residents of the village is, we're going to listen to what they say, we're going to make our case, and then we'll come back and decide what to do. But I will say that, you know, I have to say, I am disappointed at how the discussions have gone. And I guess I should say, I'm disappointed because there haven't been discussions. But I'm, you know, and I'm hopeful, so we're going to listen tomorrow, we're going to make our case, and then, you know, time is a-wastin', we would like to get going on this project, our residents have stepped up, so more to come on that. Okay. Anybody want to ask anything? If not, let me, then I have one more thing I want to say. Our village manager, I've said this before, he makes us look good. He treats our, he treats our residents and our village the way we would like it done. But for the last couple of weeks, he's been on vacation, and there was possibly a theory that the village would fall into the lake. That did not happen. And the reason that didn't happen is because of the, you know, superb staff who was still here when he was gone, including our acting village manager, our deputy village manager, Nikki Larson. So I just want to say, in behalf of the board, that while Phil was in Colorado, the village kept going, it was seamless. From my point of view, it was perfect, so I want to say thanks. Okay. That concludes the Village President's Report. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda includes items that have been published online for the community, and they've been reviewed by the board members individually or together previously as part of our community as a whole, and we don't think they warrant further public discussion. Unless anybody has a point they'd like to make on the Consent Agenda, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? It's been moved and seconded, we need a roll call on this one.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner?
Yes.
Trustee Meelopolis?
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries, Consent Agenda is approved. We're now on to regular business. The first item of regular business is consideration of a resolution authorizing a change order to the agreement with D'Amio Brothers of Elk Grove, Illinois, for a 16-inch water valve replacement project for a total cost not to exceed $23,820. And I will, I guess I thought it was going to be, it was going to be Don, but instead we have our Public Works Director, who isn't actually here because she's on maternity leave, but she's making a guest appearance. Welcome.
Thank you. Any questions, I will be deferring to Don. Well, this is a request for the approval of a change order for our recently completed project. As you remember, this was a critical project on our 16-inch water main to replace several inoperable valves. During the construction, we found the opportunity to install an additional 12-inch valve, which is why we're coming to you for this change order. There were some overall quantity adjustments, we verified all of those in the field, there were some quantities that were more than anticipated, but there were also some credits of quantities that were not used. So overall, the total cost of the credits and the additional cost is the $23,820. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Already got help. Thanks, that was clear, and I get it. Does anyone have any questions for our visiting Public Works Director, Ms. Sarno? No? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the change order?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner?
Yes.
Trustee Meelopolis?
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you for the very pithy report. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of a referral to the Zoning Commission for a proposed zoning code amendment for accessory structure setback requirements, and I'll ask our Development Services Manager, Taylor Baxter, to present. Taylor, take it away.
Thank you, President Rowan, members of the board. So this is a staff-initiated proposal for a zoning code amendment. The intent of this proposed amendment is to reduce some unnecessary delays that we're seeing, including a lot of variations that are going to ZBA. These variations are being approved for, with really no objection, very little discussion, kind of, you know, an automatic approval. It's also causing some problems for residents and staff, and we feel that this could be avoided while still meeting the intent of the zoning code. As a reminder, the zoning code amendment process is a three-step process, we're in step one here, initial Village Board review. You can either deny this proposed amendment outright tonight, or you can refer it to the zoning code for a public hearing and a recommendation. After that recommendation, it will come back to you for final review and a final decision. So this regulation has to do with setbacks for accessory structures. This is really somewhat of an obscure and technical topic, I'm going to try not to get too deep into the weeds, we'll see how that goes. Currently, the regulation says that no accessory structure shall be nearer to the street than one-half of lot depth. An accessory structure here is anything that's really detached from the principal structure, typically the house, so this can be a detached garage, a gazebo, basketball courts, tennis courts, pools, we consider accessory structures, outdoor kitchens, anything that is not attached to the house has to be one-half lot depth from the street. One-half lot depth, lot depth is taken from front property line to rear property line. That's how we determine the lot depth, the average distance between those two property lines. However, our code, in somewhat interesting fashion, says that this is taken, the measurement is taken from the street. The street is defined in the zoning code as the curb, as the paved part of the public right of life. So it's a bit odd, the way it is currently written, where you determine this required setback distance based on the property lines, but then you have to measure it from the curb. Oftentimes, the, there's, the distance between the curb and the property line can vary greatly from street to street. This causes a lot of confusion, we end up having a lot of in-depth discussions with residents, architects, to try and explain this, because it is a strange way of wording it. The intent of this regulation is likely to try to keep accessory structures out of the front yard. We don't want people to build a detached garage in the front yard, we don't want to put a pool in the front yard, outdoor kitchens, et cetera. We don't want them between the house and the street. There are a few problems with this. First of all, it's confusing, we have to explain this again and again and again, it's, the way it's written is strange, it takes a lot of staff time, a lot of people have to go through multiple rounds of review to get this right. It's unclear for corner setbacks, should we apply this to corner side setbacks? The way it is written right now, if you wanted to read it in such a way, it would not be too far of a stretch to say that on most corner lots in the village, you would apply this from the corner side, and it would cover basically the entire deed of the lot. You could not build any accessory structures, you cannot have a pool on corner lots. This is not how staff reads it right now, but there is a lot of ambiguity in it, and it causes a lot of confusion. Does not explicitly prohibit accessory structures in front yards, the way it's written right now, if you had a house, it's set back very deep on the lot, as long as the accessory structure is in the back half of the lot, it could be between the house and the street. If the intent of the code is to prevent that from happening, this does not currently prevent it from happening. This does not happen, this would not be possible on most lots in the village, but it could be possible. The biggest issue is number four here, this is really a, an unnecessary, unnecessary delay for residents when they have to go through ZBA for this. We have seen a lengthy list of projects where people have relocated pools or garages, tennis courts, et cetera, to meet this regulation, where these things were already in the backyard, completely behind the house. You can unnecessarily push these things closer to a bluff. Places where we see this happening a lot are on lots that have a ravine or on the lakefront, where the back half of the lot is basically completely unbuildable, and this regulation says you can't have these things unless it's in the front half, so they're going to end up going through ZBA. I say unnecessary because that's based on the idea that the intent of this is to keep these things out of the front yard. So we have a proposed amendment, which instead of relying on lot depth, says, as currently drafted, that accessory structures would not be allowed closer to the front lot line than the furthest point on the front of the building from the front lot line. So basically, if you have a front of a building, an accessory structure has to be at least as far away from the front lot line as the front of the building. No longer dependent on the curb. It's, it's very confusing the way it's written right now, where this measurement is taken from the curb, it's really the only thing in the code that we measure from the curb. But it's defined, street is defined in the code, that's what we have to do. If the building front of the house were already in a setback, the accessory structure would still have to meet zoning front setback. It clarifies corner lot setbacks, it says this does not apply to corner lot setbacks anymore, this is a front setback, not a corner side setback. Through lots, we do have through lots, that's a lot which has two streets on the front and the back, there are many of those throughout the village. This would give staff the ability to make a reasonable decision about which of those yards this would apply to, without going through the ZBA process. So the next steps, either deny the amendment or move to refer it to the Zoning Commission for public hearing. There is one slide that's missing here, maybe?
Sorry.
I'm having a little trouble with the mouse. Let me just skip the slide. I'm going backwards. Can I go backwards on this? Okay. Keep going, keep going. One more, there, okay. A few things to consider, I would just encourage you to think about what is the intent of the code, does staff have it right? Is the intent to keep these things out of the front yard? If so, that's what we're attempting to continue to meet. We should be clear that this amendment would provide more flexibility for accessory structure locations than we currently have. That is part of the intent of this, is to give more flexibility without going through a variation process. So currently, there are some parts of most lots where you couldn't build these accessory structures, where you now would be able to. Another thing to consider is, this would potentially allow more of these things to be next to houses, side setback requirements would still apply. There is not currently any prohibition from putting a pool or a detached garage or a gazebo or any of these things next to houses. They are allowed next to houses now, so far as they meet the 50%, so long as they meet the 50% lot depth requirement. So this could potentially allow more of those structures to be next to houses, however, side setback requirements would still apply. So that is a consideration, if that still meets the intent of the code. And finally, again, next steps for tonight, deny the amendment or refer it to the Zoning Commission for a hearing with any further instructions for staff or the commission. That, I'll take any questions.
So, do we, so you're, we're guessing about what the purpose of this ancient provision is, but it seems like a pretty good guess. Are there examples in other communities where they have provisions like this or provisions designed to prevent accessories and pools and tennis courts from being in the front yard? And a related question is, are we really saying we want them in the backyard? That's, that's the side issue, you know, so I think, and I, again, I don't know if we're inventing the wheel ourselves, or whether somebody else has done this, this sounds, this looks to me like an appearance provision to put stuff in the backyard, and what if we said, has to be in the backyard? You know, so that, so that the front of the house looks the way we sort of want Glencoe to look. I do, though, want to, you know, say excellent that the staff is doing this, it's, if we are routinely approving variances that we don't think really are variances, and I hate the idea that we're making life difficult for our residents and making them pay fees. So I'm, I'm in favor of fixing this kind of thing, so people don't have to pay fees and go through hoops that are unnecessary. So my only question is, are there other villages that have similar rules? And what about just saying, okay, it's got to be in the back?
I would, there are other villages that have similar rules, and I can look into what our neighbors do. My assumption is it probably has some variety, some probably have a lot depth provision or relation to the house, or a simple front yard setback. We can look into that prior to the public hearing and have that information available for the Zoning Commission.
Yeah, I think we, my view, we should proceed to step two and look for answers at the public hearing, and then we'll get the best result out of the public hearing. But we clearly, I don't want to charge our residents when they don't need to be charged, that's not what we do in Glencoe. Anybody else?
Yes, I wanted to add, and I believe that there are building code regulations that do relate to the relationship between buildings, spacing regulations, accessory buildings, and how they relate to the main structure, and it'd be interesting to see what the impact of those would be, while we're looking, looking at that. Most of those regulations would be hard or difficult to amend, because it's, we'd make it a special case, it would require a variation within actual building codes. For instance, I think there's a 10-foot separation between garage and house.
That's right, and our zoning code currently requires a minimum 10-foot separation for any accessory structures. We apply that to roofed structures, we wouldn't apply that to a pool, but roofed structure to roofed structure, we currently enforce a 10-foot separation requirement, and that is not proposed to be changed with this amendment.
Trustee Meelopolis?
Yes, yes. That's right, yes, that's right, not in the, if, right, not in the front yard, right, yes, potentially, yeah.
Anybody else have questions or comments? And if not, like I said, I think we should get the show on.
I appreciate staff bringing issues to our, for our consideration. You're closest to the issues, and, you know, I like the fact that they're saying, this isn't working, or this could be done better, and I appreciate you coming forward and saying, there's a definite reason for this, let's explore this option. Thank you much.
I agree. Is there a motion to approve the referral to the Zoning Commission, an amendment on the accessory structure setback requirements?
I will, I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded, let's have a roll call, please.
Trustee Hallwax?
Yes.
Trustee Listner?
Yes.
Trustee Meelopolis?
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk?
Yes.
Trustee Rubin?
Yes.
Trustee Scott?
Yes.
Motion carries, on to the Zoning Commission. Next item on the agenda is consideration of an ordinance granting preliminary and final plat of a subdivision and associated variations for 309, 315, 319, and 325 Washington Avenue. And again, I'll ask our Development Services Manager, Taylor Baxter, to present. Taylor.
Thank you, President Rowan. This is a plat of subdivision review for four addresses along the north side of Washington Avenue, just to the west of its intersection with Green Bay Road. Currently, there are four houses on the property and three adjacent unbuildable parcels that are part of this, this subject property. The proposed outcome of this would be two new lots, one with a new house and one lot that would be available for later development. The subdivision review process, typically four steps, two rounds of planned commission, two rounds of both planned commission and Village Board Review, and number four here is actually incorrect, this is not a recommendation, this is actually approval tonight, this is not another recommendation, this is actually the final step. We'll talk a little bit more in detail later, the planned commission does have the ability to combine preliminary and The plan commission does have the ability to combine preliminary and final plat review at their discretion, and at their meeting in June, they approved the applicant's request to do so. So basically, we can move from a four-step review process to a two-step review process. So this is the final step of review this evening. Existing conditions, here's an aerial outlined in red. Looks like the property lines have jumped a little bit, but you, it's generally right there. It's the four houses on the north side of the street there, and then that vacant triangular lot, and then the two narrow lots just to the north, one of which used to be Park District Several of these lots are non-conforming. The house on the corner, that lot is, does not meet zoning code standards for lot width. And then the other vacant lots do not meet lot size requirements. There's a lot of numbers on here, but the main point here is that one of these lots is zoned RC. The rest of them are zoned RD. The proposed subdivision would end up with one of these lots being split-zoned, partially RC and partially RD. Split-zoned lots are not prohibited anywhere in our subdivision or zoning code. So we are moving from a situation where there are several non-conforming lots as part of this to what would be two fully conforming lots, lots that fully conform to the requirements of the zoning code. The proposed reconfiguration, you can see here, it's maybe a little bit hard to see, two lots out of what is currently four houses with those vacant lots. Sorry, I apologize, my red lines have gotten moved here slightly, but on the left, that lot is proposed to be a new single-family lot. That is the lot that would be split-zoned. The applicant has stated that they intend to build a house for themselves on that lot and move into it when it's done. There is utility easement through the middle of the lot. This has been reviewed by our engineering staff. They do not need to move that easement for any engineering or public utilities purpose. They're proposing to very, very slightly adjust the boundaries of that for construction layout purposes. That has been reviewed by the village engineer, and there are no issues with that. Engineering plans have been received, reviewed by our engineering team. There's a new stormwater management system on the western lot. The house and the garage do straddle, are proposed to straddle this easement. That's received engineering, public works approval. There's not a problem with that. There's no other public utility work needed as part of this, and the village engineer has reviewed this and said that the proposed work on this west lot will not impact future development on the east lot. So this has gotten engineering review. The west, the east lot here, the plan that has been given to us by the applicant is that the owners who currently live in the house on the corner would continue to live in the house on the corner while the new house is built on the western lot. Because this would be a new single-family lot, they would have to demolish the other existing houses. So there will be one house on the corner while the house is under construction, then they would demolish that house, move into the new house. This eastern lot would then be available for development. We've heard from the applicant that there's been discussion of multifamily development here. Current zoning allows by right, with no other village board or commission review, single-family residential on that lot, or a very limited number of non-residential uses, including educational or religious uses, which do have onsite parking requirements. To build multifamily there, they would have to go through a special use permit process. We have heard again from the applicant that that is something that they are interested in doing, but that's not set in stone. They are interested in multifamily there, yes. Tree removal, there is tree removal on the property. This was discussed by the plan commission in some detail. Staff is of the opinion that it's tree removal that's not excessive for what you would typically see on a similar new house construction project throughout the village. There is a variation request that is associated with this subdivision, which would need to be approved along with the subdivision itself as part of the adoptive ordinance. To be clear, this is a variation from the subdivision code. This is not a typical zoning variation which goes to the zoning board. This has very different review and approval criteria than a typical zoning variation has. We'll discuss those in just a second. This variation is required for the combination of more than two lots. The intent of this is to prevent people from taking three conforming lots with three houses on them, tearing down all three houses and building one new giant house in their place. The subdivision code discourages that from happening. The subdivision code does not discourage two lots being combined into one lot. There's no discouragement of that anywhere in the subdivision code. What this applicant is requesting is to go from four houses to two, essentially. However, we're requiring this variation because of those vacant lots that are attached to it. And so in discussions with our village planner, we determined, this is somewhat of a conservative read of the code, that this is a required variation because of those vacant lots that are attached to it. However, they are going from four lots to two lots, where this would not be required if you're going from two lot to one lot, if that makes sense. I'm happy to get into that in more detail if you want. Staff's position on the variation is that it meets these criteria. You know, the requested variation is in keeping with the overall purpose and intent of this chapter, which is to, you know, again, prevent or discourage the replacement of three houses with one house, or six houses with two houses, and so on, which they're not doing here because those extra lots are essentially unbuildable on their own. The plan commission recommendation, the plan commission reviewed this. They recommended approval of both the plat and the associated variation. They approved the request for combined preliminary and final plat review. That is, by code, a request that is at the plan commission's discretion at their first meeting. So that's their decision. They felt comfortable with that. Essentially, that is, they felt that they didn't need to see this again, and they had, neighbors and the public had an ample opportunity to provide public comment. At that meeting, they discussed potentially, their discussion centered on the fact that this is in a zoning district that is zoned for multifamily, and they were asking if they could condition this to multifamily being the required use on the corner. That was determined really not to be feasible. I think that the key reason why it's not feasible is because that is not a by-right use for that corner lot. So they would be conditioning it to something that they would have to go through a public hearing process, a special use process, to get that. That's not a guarantee that that would be approved at a later date. So it was not determined to be appropriate to condition the use of that corner property as part of this subdivision. So they recommended approval without any additional conditions on this. There was more discussion about expressing concerns about the construction of single-family homes in the RD district. However, we're operating with the 1996 comprehensive plan, and single-family homes are a by-right use in this zoning district while multifamily homes are not. Multifamily homes require a special use permit. So in addition to recommending approval of this plat, the plan commission did recommend some strengthened language regarding encouraging multifamily residential to be the preferred development pattern in, specifically in the RD zoning district, which stretches along the Green Bay Road corridor. Public comment, a sign was posted onsite for 30 days, letter sent out a couple of weeks beforehand. Several neighbors did speak at the plan commission meeting. A couple of them spoke in favor of this. There was not any direct opposition. Some concerns were raised about potential on-street parking if non-residential use was built on that corner lot. Next steps, you can make a motion to approve or deny the adoptive ordinance. The ordinance includes both the plat and the associated variation. You can make changes to that as determined to be appropriate. The applicant, the petitioner for this plat is the architect, and they were unable to attend tonight. They are available by phone if you have any questions for them. I do see that the property owners are here in attendance as well this evening. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Yes.
We'll have to set up a bird eye to the, 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 the bird eye changes for the, should we be that?
The plan commission expressed concerns about the loss, throughout the comprehensive plan process, we've heard again and again and again that there is strong demand throughout the community for places for people, especially to downsize and stay in Glencoe, and there is a very limited number of locations, especially that are currently zoned for multifamily, where that could be possible. And this would be one of them. It's already in the RD district. So there is a lot of concern about losing those places to single-family development. That being said, they recognize that our current comprehensive plan does not really have strong language that would prevent that. In the draft comprehensive plan, which has not been adopted yet, so that's not their guiding document for this decision, nor is it yours in making this decision, the draft language was getting towards recommending that the village take steps to remove some of those hurdles for multifamily development in the RD district that are currently there. After reviewing this application, the commissioners agreed unanimously, the commissioners that were there, that they should change that language to more directly say that they, that the village should prioritize multifamily development. That may take the shape of removing the SUP requirement for multifamily development. They could even go further and say, "We're going to put an SUP development on single-family development in the RD district only."
So if you're, if you're, if you're zoned for multifamily, you choose to build a single-family on it, then you have to discuss your, your, your.
That's right. I would say that the way that their draft language works right now, it does not say that that's their recommendation. I think that the recommendation would be that we have this conversation here and with the zoning commission, and as part of that conversation, we would present various levels of options from, you know, that's going pretty far to say you can no longer do single-family without an SUP. It could be milder than that. We could, where we land is not specifically stated in the code at this point, but they want us to have a conversation that gets us towards concrete steps to prioritize multifamily, make it easier to do multifamily and potentially more difficult to do single-family in the RD district.
I'd like to echo the plan commission's concerns about the single-family in the multifamily zone. I think there's a process that's been online to approach this, and it's a very bleak situation. Hopefully, we can face this again, but I do hope the commission will address it as part of the comprehensive plan process. And thank you for bringing this forward and your, your options.
Any other comments? Let me just say, so this is a controversial issue, and it's interesting that basically nobody came out, but I think that probably nobody came out yet. And so I would say to, I think we should vote to approve this as is, and I'll just warn the owners that when you decide you want to, clearly, multifamily would be better for the neighbors than some other use that a lot of people would want to park. But I just want to warn the neighbors that if you want to talk about multifamily, people often show up saying, "No." That doesn't mean the village would say no, and obviously, as part of the comprehensive plan, you know, we're looking at maybe having the scale more towards multifamily in the areas already zoned for multifamily. But I just have to warn you that that is potentially a fight, so be ready for it. But with that, I think, so far, so good. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Well, let's have a roll call.
Trustee Hallwax.
Yes.
Trustee Listener.
Yes.
Trustee Meelopolis.
Yes.
Trustee Underdunk.
Yes.
Trustee Ruben.
Yes.
Trustee Scott.
Yes.
Motion carries. Ordinance is approved. Congratulations. You definitely can build your house, and best of luck on the second part. Okay. That concludes our agenda. Does anyone have any other business? If not, we don't have a closed session, so is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're